We're unmuted. All right. Welcome to the January nineteenth, twenty twenty-three zoning board of appeals meeting for the town of Manlis. So first thing I want to do is just remind anybody in the room to please mute and silence your cell phones. What we're gonna do next is we will stand and. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and freedom of the. Next point of order, only because it's not on the agenda, but I'm just gonna take real quick. Uh, welcome, Warren, for being reappointed to the ZDA and this next annual survey poll five year term. It's Warren, I wanted to. All right, uh, next thing, did everybody? Welcome back. Um, did everybody have a chance to review the minutes from the November seventeenth meeting? We're gonna do that one first and then we'll do last month's.
Yes.
Yes, do you have any questions? Can we get a motion to approve those?
Make a motion to approve in November.
Two seconds. All in favor? Aye. Opposed, okay, now we'll do the December fifteen minutes. Does anybody have any questions? No. Comments? Debbie did an awesome job on compliments.
See how Lisa did them.
All right, motion?
Motion to.
Second. All in favor? Aye, opposed. Okay. Motion carries. All right, uh, so tonight we have two appeals to hear and decide whether to grant or neither request for variance based on the established zoning laws down in Manlis. Um, up first, um, well, obviously we'll hear both of these separately. Um, and then we'll hear from the public on them and then we'll make our decision by way so. Um, so the first one on the agenda is agenda item number four. Yes, we should. May we get a motion to wait a reading?
I'll make a motion to wait.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. I was gonna read one. Okay. I don't know how I read this. All right, um, are they online? They are. Cause you guys, you guys are the Frennembers, right? Correct, okay, I thought I remembered that from before, so, okay. Uh, so the first one is Monira. Alexa main, oh, I'm sorry if I butchered your last name, uh, seventy-one fifty-three Coventry Road, uh, East York, East New York, they need a variance to install a sixteen by thirty-two foot pool. So if we could get a motion to open the public hearing on this one.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed, all right. All right, can you, can you hear us okay?
I can.
Okay, so, uh, my name's Tim, I'm with the chair of the ZBA, what I'm gonna ask is if you could, um, please just explain what you're looking to do for us.
Sure, um, do you guys have a copy of the survey?
We do. Coming up right now, yeah, Tom's gonna pull it up on the screen here, so everyone in the room can see it. Uh, but if you could just explain the, uh, the, you know, the reason.
Sure.
You wanna put a pool in and then, uh, the reason for the variance.
Sure. Uh, so as it stands right now, if I were to keep, uh, the pool, uh, twenty-five feet from the back of the property line where my fence is, um, if you're able to look at the survey, it would mean that the pool would be right up against my current deck. Um, so I am asking for a five-foot variance so that I'm able to push the pole back a little bit, um, to give me a little room between the deck and the pool.
Okay. Or do you have any questions for her? Who, who's, uh, putting the pool in?
Cannon.
Okay, that's what I thought I had read, but.
Yeah, they did my neighbors next door also.
Yeah, and, and I know based on just the orientation of your house on your lot, it sits back. I mean, most of the houses in that park sit back pretty far, but you don't really have much room from the lot line beyond that, so.
Correct.
Uh, Carrie, question?
I was just figuring out, so the, the fence in the back is yours, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and then you have a chain link on the side.
And then, I'm sorry?
The chain link on the side?
So the chain link on the side is my neighbors.
Okay. All right.
Any other question? Warren, neighbors, neighbors still have any problem?
Have you, uh, have you spoken with your neighbors? I don't see anything in here where they oppose that at all.
Um, I have spoken to both, uh, neighbors on both sides and neither of them had an issue.
And one of your neighbors has a pool anyway, so.
Both of them do, actually, both sides.
Okay. Uh, so actually, real quick, so let me add into the record, uh, on the sixth, uh, Debbie actually got an email from, uh, Russell Brandon, who is her neighbor, um, saying again, no problem with the variance for her pool, so. Let that be known.
Where she live here?
Uh, seventy-one fifty-seven, he's right next to you, right, on the left side?
Uh, he's on my right, so he's on, yeah, my left side, sorry.
Okay. Yeah. We don't have, we don't have anything else.
You know, that's it. You know, it's like.
Yeah, yeah, they were on the. Yeah, and it's not uncommon in that neighborhood for, uh, the, just the orientation, the way some of those lots are, that a lot of these pools and sheds for that matter need variances because of the size of some of the lots. And we've done a number of them in the past or in that general area, yeah. Okay, um, do you have any other questions, Kevie?
I do not.
Warren?
No.
Okay. All right, do we, uh, do we have anybody on? There are no other panelists besides yourself. Okay. All right, do you guys have any questions?
Nope.
No, okay, I gotta ask. All right, um, so can we, uh, request a motion to close the public hearing?
I'm making a motion to close the public hearing.
Warren, TP seconded, all in favor? Aye. Opposed. All right, so now what we're gonna do is we'll have a discussion among the board and those five questions that you answered in your application, we're gonna go through those ourselves, um, and then we'll come to a determination.
Sounds good, thank you.
Absolutely, so before we do that, does anybody have any questions?
No.
No? Okay, all right, question number one, uh, whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by a feasible alternative to the variance. No, no, I, and I, I know every time too, just, I know I make this comment usually, but, uh, Cannon always does a good job advising residents on the best spots to put them. So they always try to make it fit within our rules and I agree with her on where it's going, so. Um, all right, whether undesirable change would be produced in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties?
No.
Well.
Um, there's plenty of other pools and trying to elaborate, cause I know you said to make sure we elaborate on these questions.
Yeah.
Um, not just, not just yes and no. All right, uh, whether requested variance is substantial, no, it's five feet, it's makes sense.
Yeah.
Um, would the variance have an adverse impact on the physical or environmental conditions of the neighborhood? No. Uh, and then whether the alleged difficulty was self-created, yes, they want a pool.
And they don't want it up against the house.
Right, you don't wanna like jump out the window.
And in the pool, right. They, I do that.
I forgot, can we ask her how to pronounce her name?
Oh, yeah, can you, uh, just clarify the pronunciation of your name?
Sure, it's actually misspelled, there's the X in there that shouldn't be in there, but my first name is Monera and my last name is Allozamey.
Allozamey, okay.
Okay. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so. The ZBA, after taking into consideration the above five factors, finds that the benefit to the applicant does outweigh the detriment to the neighborhood or community. Uh, the ZBA further finds that a variance for five feet is the minimum variance that should be granted in order to preserve and protect the character of the neighborhood and the health, safety, and welfare of the community. Um, there's also agreement that there's no significant impact on the environment, therefore, I propose type two action on seizure and no further review is required. Based upon that, would somebody like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Go right ahead.
Mister Chairman, I make a motion that the zoning board grants an area variance to Monera, Allozima, property located seventy-one fifty-three Coventry Road, Southeast Syracuse, New York, one three zero five seven. This variance being granted for the purpose of permitting the construction of the installation of a sixteen by thirty or the thirty-two.
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 In-ground pool with an existing rear, rear yard setback of twenty feet that will need a variance of five feet to meet required twenty-five feet.
Do we have a second? Second, Warren, seconds, all in favor? Aye. Opposed. Motion carries, all right, congratulations, um, the, they will be reaching out to you, do you wanna go through your normal?
Um, they've already applied, so they'll be getting a permit, but I'll send out a, an approval form to you.
Yep, and you know, uh, you know, when they're, uh, they slated you a date yet for construction?
Uh, mid-June.
Okay. Okay, if you have any questions, please, uh, reach out to, uh, the town and, uh, congratulations again.
Thank you so much, thank you.
Have a great night.
You too.
All right. Next agenda item. All right. So, this is for John Frennemberg at sixty-one sixty-eight Woolbrook Road in Kirkville. It will need one side yard variance for the construction of a four hundred and thirty, four said more than that, four hundred and thirty-five foot pavilion, almost a four hundred and thirty thousand, that would be huge. Um, but for the construction of a, of a pavilion, so. Uh, can we get a motion to open the public hearing on this one?
I'll make a motion to open the hearing.
Kevie, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. All right, motion carries. All right, uh, John, you can stay sit there, there's not a lot of people in the room, so, do you wanna just explain what it is you're, so, what you built? Well, yeah, so it's obviously four hundred and thirty square foot pavilion, it's gonna be just a sitting area and a little hot tub area, you know, just blonde deck furniture underneath there, you know, covered area, um, the topographic of the land to try and move it forward, the grade kind of slopes down towards the driveway to keep it level and keep it back a little bit. And right behind it, it kind of, it kind of slopes up and there's a six-foot high fence right above it. So really from the neighbor on the backside, probably very little of it, depending what you'd seen, cause the fence is actually up, probably. That's, that's, this is how it's written, yeah, yeah, the one, the only one, that's, that's on that side.
Or not.
That, this one, the one with.
Oh, that one.
The bigger driveway there, yeah. That's on Andrews, right? Yeah. Uh, no, it should be on. Dog, the dogger later. Yeah, the other one's on Andrews. Yeah. Okay.
I spoke to your neighbor.
Uh, oh, um, uh, so, or.
Yeah.
Trish. Yeah, she, she's real good.
Uh-huh, no, she was fine.
Yeah.
We had a nice chat.
Yeah.
Is that whole barn?
Yours? Yes, yep. Yep, we actually, uh, approved the height variance on that, what? Probably two years ago. Twenty, maybe, I think it was. Cause it's zooming.
It was like the fall right before.
Yeah. Oh, I mean, the barn, I came, I came here. Yeah, we did, uh, I remember we did the height variance on it. Um, yeah, the barn is on that lot, yeah. Do you, uh, Carrie, do you have any questions?
I don't.
It looks good.
It, it does.
I, I think we answered my questions when we discussed it, so. Um, does anybody own that, like, we're cut out section on the, like, the lot on the corner there? You own that, so it's, so you own both those lots?
Yeah.
Okay. Now that that hasn't.
We just have them from behind them.
Yeah, now that that.
Our, that's why we had issues with the barn, cause they weren't combined.
Right, so now that has to be varying on this one, but I thought I recalled that from the past, so.
Just wanna make sure you come before you build.
Yeah.
Like that, all his go as well.
Yeah, well, like I, I talked to Tom about it, and I really wasn't under the assumption that he needed one for, that is no walls, you know, there's nothing. If you ever really had to take it down, you can take it down, but he informed me, even if you buy one on Amazon, I got one that's bigger that you gotta have. That's nuts and bolts, you can move it down in an hour.
I think it's a hundred square feet.
What'd you say?
Hundred square feet?
Hundred forty-four. Updated recently in one forty-four. Four, yeah.
Oh, one forty-four, you don't need one?
Under, under, yeah. That was just recently too. I made sure that the shed, I, it's one thirty-two. I did one of them.
Or what were you saying, I see?
I will say that I just, when, when did I close out your addition that had the, for the renovation that got the permanent, that maybe a couple.
July, maybe?
Yeah. So that one was definitely, that was just closed out, if anybody noticed that. Yeah. Not being on here, that was just recently done. Yep. And completed and given a C O. Right?
I think it was July.
Yeah, you and I. Yeah.
No, people building without. Oh, and then I come in and say, hey, we always tell them, tear it down.
Tear it down, sir.
Good practice.
No, I mean, it's, I, obviously, I don't know who's watching this, but it is an important reminder for residents that if they're gonna build something, to always call and ask first.
Yeah.
Just to ensure that they're within their interest, or the proper setback to their properties, but it's not a, uh, unprecedented question. Do you have any other questions?
Question.
Yes, sir. Uh, fire away.
I'm trying to match these two.
Turn the one on the bottom to the, rotate it to the block a little bit, yeah, there you go.
So this would be the front?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, this is the face in the driveway, this over here is facing the trees and roads. So the variance areas, like, the, this corner here.
Did you get that little notch on, on this picture?
I didn't take the picture, so I did. The notch is, there's no cover on it, that's just.
Oh, there's no cover, just, yeah.
Yeah, it's not.
No, the notch is nothing.
It's just open.
Yeah. And is the whole thing gonna be open?
Yeah, just the way it is, just the roof, just a roof over it and then the gable ends, just sided. So eight feet, you know, just for, just the post, and I was like, I'm gonna see.
And the, and the poster just wouldn't post in the time?
Yeah, probably gonna put, like, exact trim, light trim or something around, dress them up or stay in them.
Okay, it's just open.
Yeah, that's it.
So you own this property over here, right?
So that tree line?
Yeah.
Remember the pole is where you took that?
Yeah.
All the way up the tree line, all the way down, I own.
It's all along to the fence.
The fence is mine, the fence is yours, so if you took the fence line straight to the road.
What's the, what's the, what's the setbacks on the side of the line, I think?
Or.
Would they have to be? I mean, they got twelve feet.
Forty-four to twenty, so twenty on the side.
Thank you.
Yes, we just need to, you need eight to, to.
So they need, that's where they need the variance is on the side.
Side yard.
Yeah.
Right?
And it's only that area.
Yeah, they only eight, they need eight feet.
Let's give him ten. Move to build, no. Yeah.
As long as you go help move it. He's pretty strong. All right, Warren, any other questions?
No, my only question was why it was built before you got a permit, that was my only question. Like I said, I didn't, I didn't think that I needed anything with it being open on the sides. I figured it was just a cover top, and we were gonna do a bolted one to begin with, and I didn't think you needed one for that either. And then after the fact, I, once Tom called me and I talked to him, I talked to him a lot, and it's not that I went to the paperwork, cause I ran right down that afternoon and I talked to him. I did all the paperwork, paid everything done, and it's, honestly, it's the best guy.
And I, and I would say when I, cause I would go into a house, when I drove by, I was like, there's no way he's doing this. Cause he came, right?
Yeah.
Came to the ZBA for the whole barn, he came to us for the addition, I I was there more times than needed for the addition, that all went flawlessly, so I was like, and he was very hands-on for the addition, so I was like, again, and, yeah, I called you at like nine AM and you were there at like ten thirty with all.
I was actually at work, I was like, I'll be right down, so.
Yeah. I grabbed all the paperwork, I was right over there. Yeah, I was gonna say that you were real quick to get that addressed, so, thank you. Yeah, no, it's, I tried not going to look for things, but I was like, this is an easy one. He does, he drives all around the town. It's all right now, that's what happened. He drags around, he puts a monocle on and he looks over and.
He's gotta, he, he has a talent to buy a, what do you call those?
Yeah.
Tarp or things.
I agree with you, Warren, though, it is a nice piece of property.
Yeah, no, you guys are trying to keep it up.
It's really.
Yeah, you guys have done a great job, like you guys say, you know, you're on something with the dash, you're not with the, the neighborhood, I'm trying to make it to where mine, uh, and there's a lot that are.
One of the neighbors was okay with it, I won't, I won't.
Yeah. And the owner of the little penny person next door is okay with it?
Yeah.
All right, so if nobody has any of your questions, can we get a motion to, oh wait, do we have anybody online? No other, we just confirm, always like to make sure. No other participants. Okay, so can we get a, uh, motion to close?
Motion to close, second.
All in favor? Aye. All right. All right, so with that being said, we are going to go through the five questions. All right. Number one, whether benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by a feasible alternative due to variance? It's built, no?
No, well, it's reasonable.
Um, whether a undesirable change would be produced in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby property? No, no, they're taking great care and you guys have done a good job to make that look really nice. Um, whether requested variance is substantial?
No.
It's more than half, it's more than half of the standard, but.
But there's a lot of room up there.
Yeah.
But they're in tight into a community, into a subdivision, might make a difference, but.
So it's not substantial in relation to, you know, the surrounding.
The surrounding.
And the property and the other movements on the lot, probably would be the answer.
Fits the character of the neighborhood. Uh, would the various have an adverse impact on the physical or environmental conditions of the neighborhood? No, no. Uh, whether the alleged difficulty was self-created?
Yeah.
All right, um, any conditions or anything? I forgot to ask that with the old, the other ones.
What's the roofing and the material of them?
Just the architectural shingles mesh house.
Okay.
Everything will mesh with the houses.
Right.
And again, will be a fence, the fence is partially behind it now, and it's gonna come down a little bit, just pass it and then down the corner of it, the alley across, so the whole thing's gonna be enclosed in a six-foot high class.
Oh, so you won't be able to see whether the sides are or not?
Right.
But you're not gonna impose the.
No, what's there, that, that.
Stay it open.
Yeah, okay.
You're not the down south, I guess. No. It's what they do down south. Get out of the sun, they have this big cover, you know?
We don't, we have sun like two weeks a year.
Yeah, I know, I know, I live there.
Yep, this guy's great. All right. Any other questions? Good, all right, so the ZBA, after taking into consideration the above five factors, finds that the benefit to the applicant does outweigh the detriment to the neighborhood or community. The ZBA further finds that a variance for twelve feet is the minimum variance that should be granted in order to preserve and protect the character of the neighborhood.
No.
Or eight feet.
It's eight.
Eight, okay. I amend what I said, eight feet. Uh, in order to preserve and protect the character of the neighborhood and the health, safety, and welfare of the community. Uh, ZBA further grants the variances requested with the following conditions, of which there are none. And there's agreement that there is no significant impact on the environment, therefore, I propose to type two action on seizure and no further review is required. Based upon that, KP, can you make a motion? No, I can't. You already did one.
You're right.
Warren, you wanna go?
Uh, Mister Chairman, I make a motion that the zoning board grants a variance of eight feet to provide relief from the required twenty-foot setback to, uh, the property John Friedenberg.
Friedenberg.
Uh, located at sixty-one sixty-eight Woolbrook Road, Kirkville. For the purpose of a pavilion.
Yeah, showing how clarified on that motion is that it's a side yard setback.
Side yard setback, okay.
Yep.
A non-enclosed pavilion.
I'll check into it. All in favor? All right, aye. Opposed. Motion carries, congratulations.
Thank you.
Enjoy it. Um, all right, let's see what else do we have? We're gonna read a book. All right, uh, do we have any other business? Anybody have anything? Any questions? Um, I will say there was a, uh, so first off, the ZB news have a panel. You guys have all received it, it posted on your town website.
Oh.
Um, of course, can't say anybody has questions, but the good thing about this is it has, as it always does, it's very good at it, cause it has the file by date. Um, we do already have one on the agenda for next month, but we will have a meeting in February. Um, more information coming on that soon.
Standby.
Standby, be ready.
Right, yeah.
Be ready to have seven variants within one items, um, but we'll be good. And then, uh, the only other thing is there was, uh, just so you guys are aware, uh, Sarah sent out, there's, uh, do you wanna explain what that is she's working on?
Simon, have some time?
No. Oh.
I saw the email.
The email, um.
I think everybody here is using the town email.
Yeah.
They just wanted.
I think it was to the chairs, no, to the chairs, there was, well, that, and if you don't have your ID, please get that. Me, um, no, there, I'll, I'll forward it when it's all done, there, um, there are some things that the town board is working on from a zoning standpoint, so there's some of that, same just they're working on is they work on the comprehensive plan and stuff. So. I will give you guys a press story, we have it all set, bye. All right, congratulations. Yeah. Thank you. I was trying to rumble through it.
Yeah.
All right, uh, anybody have any other questions? Tom would like somebody to make a motion to adjourn, make a motion to adjourn.
No.
Any motion?
All right. Y'all have a good night. Thank you. If I could have you for a couple minutes to review the project.
Sure.
Very well.
Yeah.
And then. And the true, like, you said, what's the, what's the age?
Um.
Then I remember, I go, my three-year-old daughter, so.
Yeah, yeah.
How do you?
So how do I, I try getting back in there to say, hey, I tried to let them, and they were like, prickles. Um, I go, you just keep those houses, and, yeah, um.
See, it's good, like. But this, we, we have, this is, we started, anything's ready, I'll begin it again, we go once a week, we go once a week, and I. Okay, thank you. He's fairly confident in the water, cause we have people who do this, but.